Dustin Timmets has been.
Yes, no?
I don't think it included the postage. I think we should would get a separate bill for that.
Okay.
I think it should be around eight hundred total.
That's great.
It's a really good value.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm really glad the school shared that information and were able to get some more information out there.
Like that.
Yeah.
Oh, neighbors driving neighbors.
All right, we're almost there. I don't want anyone to be taken off guard by my gavel.
It is six thirty in Reed Field, Maine. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Reed Field Select Board Meeting from May twenty second. We appreciate everyone joining us here live and on Zoom. As I always do to start these meetings, I remind everyone at the tables to please be aware of speaking clearly into your microphones so everyone at Zoom can hear us. Same thing if you go to the podium. We begin tonight with our minutes, item twenty-three one seventeen, which is the Select Board Meeting Minutes from May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions or I would entertain a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the revised minutes that were mailed out this afternoon.
It's been moved in second to accept the meeting minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much, and I will note that Steve DeAngelis will be joining us later tonight. Next item is twenty-three one eighteen, warrants forty-five and forty-six, and we turn our attention to Catherine Woodson, who was the official reviewer of those warrants. Catherine, take it away.
Now I don't see the paper for it. I think it's on the back page. So. Sorry. Eric, does she leave the sheet in after?
It should be in there. It just might be in the middle if it got mixed in with the payroll items.
Here it is. It is on the back. It's just curled under. So we have warrants forty-five and forty-six. The employee payroll amount was twenty-four thousand two forty-four nineteen. The accounts payable was three hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred and three dollars and ninety cents. And all pretty routine things, of course. The large expense is for the school, which was somewhere in this. Three oh nine, three hundred and nine thousand. We did have one bill that I thought was noteworthy. Everything else was very routine. We did have some computer repairs. That was for nineteen hundred and eighty dollars. And we had a bill for cushion construction for road repair for the, I believe it was the May first storm. There was repairs done to Scrivner Hill, Untune Lane, Church Road, and the corner of Lane and P Ridge. That was for three thousand two hundred forty-six and twenty-five cents. And then just as a side note, in the warrant I'm reviewing for next meeting, there's an additional bill for four thousand two hundred and forty, which is more work on Church Road at the cemetery in Kent's Hill, Rat Mill Hill and Loose Road and Beaver Dam. And there is a larger bill from Horn Construction in the thirty, forty thousand dollar range, which was for Plains Road. So there was a lot of damage done to all of those roads from the rain that we had. In any case, this warrant totals three hundred, four hundred seventeen thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and nine cents, and I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve warrants forty-five and forty-six in the amount of four hundred seventeen thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and nine cents. Is there any further discussion on those warrant items? Yes, ma'am.
One question. There was two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for S. Leonard Landscape Architect for Engineering for Parks and Recreation. I thought we pulled like twenty-eight hundred. We were paying for the landscape architect. Is this the one? Bill we're sending them? I thought I saw it before, but maybe it's just because we were talking about the total.
This is the bill. It was for everything, the two thousand eight fifty.
Eight fifty, okay.
Yep.
All right, just having deja vu. Thank you.
She has been paid for past work involving this project, so that may be where you saw that.
So do we know what? So this is in addition to past stuff?
Yeah, I think from.
From a year ago.
Things from last year, yeah.
I don't know what, how much that was or anything.
I could look, look back and find it, yeah.
That's right. I just was, this one was sounding familiar. Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much. We move next to Select Board Communications. This is time set aside for any members of the Select Board to address the public. Now is your opportunity. Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, so I want to apologize and clear the record. It's brought to my attention, so when Cash McClure made his thousand dollar donation to the rec board, I think I was the one that coined the phrase Cass's Court, and its parents and everything were like, oh, good idea, yay. And then it was brought to my attention after the hearing last week that shortly after that was donated, it did not have strings attached saying it was just for the basketball court. And at that time, they needed funds for something else, I think for reversible jerseys. And knowing Cash, he's like, hey, yeah, whatever, whatever you need. So when it started being bantered about again now with Cass's Court and the Fairgrounds Project, just some of the banter got a little bit in depth. And I just don't want Cash to be in the middle of that public debate at all. When and wherever that court goes, I'm hoping that it honors him for his donation and his immense talent, and even more than that, he's a very humble human being and would not want to be in the limelight of any of this debate and stuff that's going on in town. So I want to remove that from him. And at some point, we will honor him in an important, you know, appropriate way, wherever that might be. But I just wanted to make that record straight that that was not his, the reason he donated the money. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cash, all the same.
Absolutely. Catherine?
I just, a comment for the town manager. I had been in and talked with Eric earlier, but the street sweeper, Ellis Company.
Ellis Construction.
Ellis Construction had a breakdown and dumped all kinds of oil all over the parking lot out front. And I kind of thought the smell had gone away, but it really hasn't.
Still back, okay.
So one of the things Eric suggested is that we could seal the driveway. It goes out into the road. We're not going to seal the road, obviously. Or at least we should probably repaint the lines since they're all pretty much gone now, so.
And a thorough cleaning is in order by the company just to do what they can to remove that because that is a major issue, at least aesthetically, and the smell isn't, isn't great either.
Excellent. Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else? Show me. All right. I have three things that I'd like to talk about. Number one, I received a phone call from someone today that they are going to be coming in a little bit late, and if it's the pleasure of the board, they still would like to be a part of the public comment. I said that wouldn't be a problem, but I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it to you when, when they got here. The second thing I wanted to mention was that the Heritage Days Committee met again on Sunday. And so far, so good. We have a lot of different organizations that are looking to be a part of our celebration. We are going to be doing things at the beach again with the Makers Market, and this year we're adding a community fair. And what we mean by that are community organizations. I just spoke with Carol. Last year, there was a great business open house at the Inn. And with Carol being absent, we're going to ask those same businesses if they would like to come down to the beach, set up a table, makers, crafters, set up a table. There is no charge to be able to come down there. So we're looking at a time period from twelve to four. We're going to have food again. We're trying to get a band. The first band I asked, they, they're already booked, so we're going to ask for music. If anybody has any suggestions, we'll take it. But it looks like we're going to have a really nice time at the beach with all kinds of different activities and organizations there to help us. So I'm looking forward to that. The third thing, I guess I had four things. The third thing is I had someone contact me, Eric, about putting a float in at the beach and talking about being able to put the float out there and be able to have that. I know that there's been issues with it in the past, but I wondered, I wondered about, you know, there certainly must be some way that we can arrange for that. And I would, I would be a proponent of that. I think it would be really great to have that, especially if folks want to swim and back and forth. So I would, I would ask that we pursue putting a float in at the beach this year. I know it's been a question in the past. A lot of people have asked about it, and I'd like to see that happen. So if we can arrange that, somehow work on it, it would be great.
We can take a look at the budget and, yeah, see what, see what else can be done.
Thank you, sir. I think it's still there.
It's still there, but it's waterlogged and not really usable. It was pulled out during, before COVID.
It weighs so much.
Yeah, we had, we had to use a tractor to get it out, so it's not really practical to move around. We do need a new one. And so I guess one thing we could do is if anybody has an interest in a donation, but like I said, I will look at
Yeah, please.
and see if there's any room in there.
If we need to get some numbers together, it's absolutely worth it to get maybe a composite one or a plastic one in there, but I think it would be good.
Yeah, I think it was an old, uh, rotor molded plastic, but it had that foam in the middle. And once you get the water in that, it's impossible to get it out, so.
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
I just want to interrupt before you finish. I misspoke. The horn bill for the Plains Road is only six thousand four hundred. I don't know where I came up with thirty or forty thousand, so I was wrong.
That was the cushion bill from the Christmas storm.
Yeah.
Okay, on the record, and we'll talk about that next week anyway.
So I'm sorry, on that note, would the float be rec or is there an actual, there's a beach fund or a beach?
It would, we have a.
Or something?
It would be, it could be one or the other. I would look at the beach accounts first because that really would be something that would be infrastructure. Rec is typically programming, and they do have some funds for things like
Thank you.
equipment, but I would say this is more of a capital item, something that, you know, probably costs a couple of grand, depending on the size, and would be most appropriately taken from the beach fund. So I can look at that and look at what we have active in the budget and also next year's budget, which is coming right up, and the reserve account too, and see if, if there's anything in there we can work with.
Would the current, like, I guess the old float be worthy of trying to sell it if somebody wants to push it out into the water and pull it to their part of the, I don't know if it's even worthy of that.
Certainly, we could try selling it. I don't know. I wouldn't think it would have a lot of value, but we can try.
Or the time honored Maine tradition of just leave it by the side of the beach entrance and see who comes.
Natalie over here.
Yeah, exactly. Just put free.
You couldn't load on a trailer.
Yeah, it's. And then the fourth thing I had is this, and I wrote it down so I would make sure that I had everything correct. This past week, I was contacted by a Reed Field resident about what was said before we heard from the owner of the Emporium about an application for a liquor license. And I wanted to take a moment and clarify what was said and why I said it. When you are arrested for breaking the law, you can stay in jail until your criminal trial, or you can pay to bail yourself out and be free. And bail usually involves money, but can also have other conditions that in order to remain free until your trial, you must follow. Some of these conditions of bail could include submitting to a weekly drug test. These bail conditions could be requiring seeking counseling, or in some cases, bail conditions could restrict you from directly engaging or being around certain people. When the owner of the Emporium was arrested for harassing the town manager and his family, one of the bail conditions that was a part of his release was for him to have zero direct or indirect contact with Mr. Dyer. And despite these restrictions, arrangements were made for town business to still be able to be conducted through the other employees and at public meetings where the town manager is present under limited contact conditions presented by the town attorney to the owner of the Emporium. And despite this condition, we continue to see direct and at times inappropriate contact made. Therefore, I feel it is important to add to the public record that as a courtesy to a resident and as a testament to the integrity of Eric Dyer, we allow this direct contact to happen. That was what I tried to clarify before we heard from the Emporium owner. The Select Board will always protect our employees and ensure their safety as they do the work of the town. Thank you. Is there anything else? Excellent. Yes, go ahead.
I do not like being in the middle of this, but I was told that that particular court case resulted in the no contact agreement. The case was dropped. It went to court, but it was dropped. But there's others pending which might, okay.
That still applies to this, and I have the piece of paper right here.
There was no case that was dropped.
So I just want to clarify. What, what has happened to my family is shameful, and I don't blame the person responsible for trying to hide that fact and misrepresent the truth. But the fact of the matter is he still has two cases pending, one in criminal court, one in civil court. Those will be addressed by the appropriate body, and I'm looking forward to some resolution of that. I don't believe it's going to change his approach or really the situation on the ground. But I think it's important for people to know the facts. I appreciate very much your statement, Dennis. And I think that we, we can do better than this as a community. We just need everybody to cooperate and to not buy a spite house and anyway. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Carol, for trying to clarify that.
I just know there is multiple issues, so when you hear one thing, it may not be the whole story.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly right. And hang on one second. Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
But you have to excuse.
Can you go up there? I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. I know, I know. Otherwise, they can't hear you on Zoom. Thank you.
Since we're clarifying for the public record and all.
You guys set out a Select Board public statement. It's on the website.
August of twenty twenty-two.
August.
Yep.
And it said, Mr. Batar is still free to engage in town business at Giles Hall, and it is in no way restricted from the right and privileges of a Reed Field citizen. So how is he restricted from coming to these meetings if you guys are saying that he isn't?
Sure.
And now you're saying he is.
Well, he's welcome to Zoom in. That's, he can do that and conduct that, but being in the same room, that's direct contact.
Okay, that doesn't say, it says at Giles Hall.
So just to clarify, Virginia, that was before his three arrests and the bail conditions that were set as a result of that.
Yeah, so that happened before that.
So. Okay.
Thank you. Good clarification, though. Speaking of, we'll transition to Eric and the town manager report and treasurer's report. We have ten minutes set aside for this. Eric, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. I will start with the report for treasurer, and this will be for the month of April. I'll be quick. Check reconciliation was completed through April thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, and our accounts are in balance and reflect accurate accounting. All bank activity is normal for the month of April. With respect to the audit, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit is essentially complete, and we have been working with the auditor. We expect a report and a presentation to the Select Board in June. So next month, we'll have either the fifth or the twentieth, we'll have a report from the auditor. We're still working on final dates for that. With the budget process, that is effectively complete, has been for a few months now, as we have to wrap all this stuff up before we publish and print the ballots. The only outstanding items are the one public hearing on May thirty-first at six thirty PM here at the town office. And then we also have, of course, voting on June thirteenth, so that's, those are two things that are coming up, I believe, to the budget. Again, this report covers the month of April. Revenue expenses should be about eighty-three percent. I do note that real estate payments are up slightly for the year-to-date, but showing a decline for the month. Total receipts are down for the month of April, but on track for the year-to-date. State revenue sharing is up for the month and the year-to-date, while homestead exemption revenue is actually down. But those two effectively offset one another, so the state contributions are in those two areas anyway, which is the prime. So the state contributions are in those two areas anyway, which are the primary areas, are fairly static. Motor vehicle payments are down for the month, but up slightly for the year to date. We do always try to pay very careful attention to motor vehicle payments because that is an indicator of what people are spending money on and what we might see for revenues in other areas. So that's a decent bellwether. Townwide revenues are similarly down. Expenses are up for the month and the year to date. Capital expenses account for a lot of that. Road maintenance, as we just heard, is a large factor. Also, capital expenses that we hadn't had for the last two years as we kind of retracted during COVID and put off projects that otherwise had been budgeted and planned. And then, let's see, revenue and expenses are running very close to the budgeted amounts, which is a very key point, that we're running close to the anticipated budgeted amount. And that's my treasurer's report for the month of April. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to town manager's report. I had not given one earlier in the month, so there's a fair amount to report here. I'll start with administration and personnel. I'll make the note that many administrative tasks are wrapping up this month. The, the work that was required for the comp plan, the budget process, a lot of the communication that had to happen around town meeting. Those things are freeing up, and we have some opportunity to work on other projects. I'm happy to report that two things are moving forward that I hadn't necessarily had anticipated. But one is that we have a meeting with Alpha One Architects out of, out of South Portland for a free consultation around ADA access at the town beach and transfer station. So we can look at the parking spots at the transfer station and also a full path, path as in a general term, not a specific one, down to the, to the, to the beach area and perhaps even to the water. They do have grant funds that they utilize to provide that free consultation to towns and private businesses to help improve ADA access. So that's really exciting that we're able to start moving on that. And the other one, what was it? Well, anyway, things like that are, I'm having some more time to do that, which is great. I do want to welcome back Chris Cassiani, who is returning for a second season with our maintenance crew. He does basically three season work for us and then heads on down to Florida in his RV, which is enviable, depending on the weather. But, and then we also are looking for beach attendants. We still have a couple of spots there. We, we don't necessarily need a full time person. If someone wants to be full time, they can. If they want to be part time, we could fill that in with a couple of people. But if you know any high school kids or young adults or really anybody, retired teachers, people that are off for the summer, send them to the town office. We're looking for people to help staff the beach. Depends, minimum age really for operating a maintenance equipment, I think, is 15 to run the lawnmower, which is a big part of what you do down there. But we've had people as young as 14 there in the past, too. So we're willing to be flexible and train somebody, especially if they have an interest of maybe continuing on because we always seem to struggle keeping people in the system. But we're trying to work on wages and also getting people in early and keeping them with us, so. I want to report the negotiations are complete, and we have a new contract in place for Ask Me 93. So that's one, another piece that we're done with for the, for the next couple of years. And I want to report on the holiday closure for Memorial Day, Monday, May 29th, and that the town office and library will be closed that day. Moving on to roads, traffic, parking and safety. Spring sweeping is complete. Definitely let us know if there are areas that were missed by the sweeper. We did have to send them back to do some work on Chase Road. And I want to know if there's anything else out there that needs to be taken care of. We do have a lot of winter sand on the road shoulders, and we're trying to pick away at that as we can. Really, we're going to have to be putting out a ditching contract because it's been a few years since we've done a thorough cleaning of those ditches. But that's going to be a separate item further on. In the meantime, maintenance crew picking away at what they can. Brush clearing and tree work are complete for Church Road. I haven't heard a final number, but reclamation and paving are scheduled for the weeks ahead for that road. So we will try to give as much notice as we can when that work starts. And Pike will have appropriate personnel on the ground for flagging. Likely will be doing one lane at a time, but we won't know for sure until we get down there. In any event, we'll make sure we maintain access for local traffic.
When you say we'll notify folks, are you actually going to notify the residents on the road again? If it's starting?
Yes, if, if we have the, the lead time that we expect to have, we should be able to send out a letter. But more likely, we will just go down the road and go door to door and drop off a, something on the door, a little door hanger. Letting people know. And we'll also do the website, and, and you'll see some trucks queuing up. So we'll, we'll, we'll have a little bit of warning. I want to report that we have an active review of traffic and parking at Reedfield Corner underway in response to questions and requests from business and, businesses and residents in the area. I actually met with a gentleman from the Village Initiative Program at Maine DOT today. We reached out to the Maine Local Road Center, and I've talked with the road traffic engineer for our region about traffic and parking issues in downtown because there are a number of businesses that could, and, and town functions that could benefit from additional parking. And there were some, already some, some good ideas that came from, from those discussions. It's going to take time to resolve long term, but it's, it's good that we're having these discussions. So as difficult as some of these things can be when they get started, there's always a way to find value for the community and try to do what's right for the town. So we're undertaking that actively. I want to report also, we had an active and productive public meeting with Goro Palmer and residents to discuss preliminary design options for the Church Road sidewalk proposal. We will have another public meeting and likely one after that. But the one that we're thinking about next would be mid to late June. And that would be discussed revised proposals and some ideas that have come from residents at the hearing, from select board members, from the road committee, who had some interesting thoughts, and also from the engineers themselves, who have started to really think about what's going to be happening and what the community is looking for with that potential project. So as soon as I know what that date will be, we will publish it on the town website and try to get word out as broadly as possible. But that process is rolling on. And again, I want to thank everybody that participated and gave feedback on that. The last item I have is that an RFP for work on the intersection of Nickerson Hill and P Ridge Road will be issued next week. And so that's the issue where the road has went from a nice crisp square about 80 or 100 years ago to a really well-banked NASCAR track corner. And we owe it to the property owner to move that back off of his lawn, and we're going to be working on that. So maintenance and transfer station, just a few bullet points here. Summer cemetery work and grounds maintenance are in full swing. Those guys eat grass for three months solid. That's what they'll be doing, and that's going to be a bulk of their time over the next few months. Brush grinding is taking place at the transfer station this week, and we, we cannot accept brush when the brush grinding is ongoing. A couple of things. That equipment is very, very expensive and could be damaged if people are in there driving around. Also, if it's in operation, then it's a real risk, and we don't want material flying all over the place and hitting people. So for insurance reasons, other reasons, we don't accept material during the week. We should be done by Saturday. Call ahead if you have any question or are uncertain about what the status of that is. And thanks for your patience on that. The special spring composting event and activities are happening at the transfer station on June 11th from 8 to noon. And I want to just point out again that composting at the transfer station just saves money flat out. Every pound, every ounce of material that gets composted saves the town money because we're not paying to have it disposed of. And then it can be used for local gardening and, and some farms even come by and grab a truckload now and then. So that's a good thing for the community. The focus really is on education, particularly education for the kids. So if you have an interest in how that all works, we will be handing out some, some freebies and some more of those compost bins that people seem to like. So June 11th at the transfer station for composting. The Household Hazardous Waste Day is happening July 9th. So the next month, and that's going to be from 9 AM to noon, and Catherine was correct about that. July 9th, yes. And we ask that folks let us know in advance what they're bringing so we can, you know, deal with the, the explosives and things like that and just say, yeah, let's hold that off. Bring that someplace else. But we do have a really large selection and list of items that people can bring. Just if you have any question, call ahead, and we can get rid of a lot of material at little to no cost, generally no cost for residential use. If you have something that's commercial in nature, we can consider that. Just give us a heads up, and there might be a small cost. And then the last item is Sunday summer hours at the transfer station. Those are back starting June 4th from 8 to noon on Sunday and running every Sunday through August 27th. So again, we bookend with Memorial Day and Labor Day non-inclusive. So any of those other weekends, we're open 8 to noon on Saturdays. Or excuse me, Sundays at the transfer station. And that's my report for the town manager and other duties assigned.
Eric, can I just, just question that we're definitely focusing on the cemeteries this week for Memorial Weekend?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, they've been working very closely with the cemetery committee, and the staff are fully engaged doing that work.
And I even went and helped put flags out the other day for almost an hour. They look really sharp up there at Reedfield Corner.
Thanks. Thank you for that. Yeah, and we, they have a new program, too. They're, they're trying to double check and make sure that we've got people coming in after the fact to check and make sure that everybody that should have a flag has a flag. So really going to that next level and making sure that the veterans are properly honored and remembered, so.
Do you know what the pay is for the beach attendant?
I think we're up to 14 an hour because minimum wage is now 1375. Or maybe it's 1275, and we, we try to go about a dollar an hour over that just because we can't compete with people waitressing or waiting. Or there's a lot of other jobs that, that pay. And so we, I think it's a great job. It's fairly low key. You sit there, you can read your book when people aren't around, you can do a little bit of maintenance work, and you just make sure that people are using the beach appropriately and safely. But yeah, it's a great entry level job or a low effort, if that's what you're looking for.
And is that something we put, like, on the Facebook?
Oh, it's already there.
Okay, cool. Thank you, thank you. And then just one other thing. So like the next, if Goro Palmer does anything as far as like sidewalk alternate proposals, is that after the next meeting or is that like starting now?
That would be kind of part of it. So what they're working on now is trying to take the information, the feedback they've been given and try to fit that in on the ground and just confirm what's happening on the ground and, and talk amongst themselves. And again, we had a meeting with, full meeting with our DOT contact person and the road committee, not the, not the full road committee, but members of the road committee, to just talk about it and say, hey, what do we hear? What does this mean? And things that came across very clear were that the, the west side seemed to be a very preferable choice for a number of reasons, that parking, particularly between Route 17 and the Union Meeting House, is something we should strongly look at, the fact that we want to maintain access. So they're looking and taking all that information and revising their, their starting point. And they'll be coming back with some proposals, then we can talk about those two. So that's how that process will work. We'll have it, like I said, at least that one other public meeting, but, but I think we had budgeted for three, so we'll probably go ahead and do all three, so.
Okay, because I know there was also, like, we had talked about a hybrid proposal where it's on Union Meeting House side and then crossing before.
Yeah, so they're, they're looking at all those options and all those suggestions. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Excellent. All right. We now move to boards, committees, commissions and departments. We have minutes from the Age Friendly Committee as well as the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Any observations, questions? Excellent. Well, we'd just like to say thank you to the Age Friendly and Comprehensive Plan Committee for submitting those minutes. We move now to public communication. We have 10 minutes set aside for this. This is a time where the public may address the select board. I'm going to ask if anyone on Zoom would like to do that. Now is your time. You can either unmute and ask your question. You can type your question into the chat. And yes, someone, Mr. or Mrs. Taxpayer says that the town transfer station link on the website still says Eric at the top is the manager, so we might want to look at updating that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, Karen Peterson is the transfer station manager. Anyone here like to address the public? Go for it. You know the routine, Dave.
Dave, let me, the connectivity committee. Is that, was that just created April at the April 10th meeting? Is that correct?
It was recent. I'm not sure which meeting it was.
Okay, I'm pretty sure it was the April 10th one, so seven minutes. Was that advertised anywhere? I did not see.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it usually gets put up on the, on the town Facebook page or the bulletin board, also in the messenger. So I'll check. I mean, I'd have to check the last month's messenger, but it, it should have been.
I didn't seem to find it anywhere.
Okay.
So I'd like to see, like, the committees, you know, right on the front page of the website, maybe, so we can, there's openings for committees and not have to dig for them. The only other question I'd have with that is Catherine, you have an application in for that committee?
Yep.
Well, your application was dated April 4th, six days before the committee was created.
I, okay.
Yeah, that isn't a little odd.
I received something from Eric about the committee. We had talked about it previously in, in our board meetings.
That seems a little odd, but I mean, we don't know if it was advertised and then it was created and there's applications in prior to its creation. You don't think that looks a little funny?
Anybody can apply.
How would they know to apply?
I believe it's been advertised, but we'll find out.
We'll confirm that, yeah.
Is the policy to take first come, first served, is that other?
Nope. I don't believe that's how we do any committee appointments.
But it isn't a policy to be advertised?
It is.
I can actually tell you, right on the, the boards, yeah, the boards, committees and commission have it here. It's an ad hoc. And it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's on there now. Still, still up in the air about where the meetings are because we haven't put the, we haven't appointed people yet.
On the town website?
Yes, sir. That is correct. At the very top of the navigation bar, you can see boards and committees. And when you roll over that, it gets all of them there. Connectivity Committee is still listed on there. Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question on that.
Sure, go for it.
I don't want to take public things. About applying to committees is, somebody said when somebody applies and then gets, you know, there's not a spot or something, then that's held for a year. I was looking at the policy, it's held for a year, and then if a position comes up, then it's filled with somebody that's been kind of waiting. Because I know I had in fact asked two, three times about the Comprehensive Plan Committee because I was like really curious about what was going on with that and told, oh, we're full, we're full. I never did submit a, a formal, you know, I want to apply for this. And just kept being told, oh, we don't need anybody, don't need anybody. And then I'd see like, oh, they got a hole in Comprehensive Plan Committee. So it, it just made the appearance of wanting to like hand select and hand pick specific types of people for the committee. Not that my hate feelings are hurt, I have enough to keep me busy, but I, I believe the policy says when someone applies with a formal application and there's not an opening, then during that year, if one does come open, then they're under consideration or can be considered, is what I think I saw.
Great. I think the way it works is anybody can apply, but that doesn't mean that anybody will be selected. I know one thing we've talked about in the last year is trying not to have people on multiple committees unless we don't have enough volunteers. If we don't have enough volunteers, then we're happy to take someone like Mr. Durgen, who is on multiple committees, because we don't have enough people to fill all the slots.
Another thing on that, on that note, sorry. After the fairgrounds meeting, somebody approached and said, I would. After the Fairgrounds meeting, somebody approached and said, I would really like to be on that committee, not on a committee right now, actually new to the area, but a very skilled gardener. And what didn't attend any meetings, just like that sounds like a really cool project, so I would like to encourage her to submit an application because she's even like what plants deter ticks and, you know, very well schooled and all of that and is on the State Garden Club and the Augusta Garden Club, seems to have a lot of knowledge. So, and I think I asked, can someone from the public be on there that's not in a committee? And I was like, ooh, that's too many people, but I am going to encourage her to formally put in her request and have it considered. I think she'd bring a lot of expertise to that.
So Dennis, I would like to add a quick point of clarification. So typically with the committees, the Select Board adopts a policy guiding document with each committee when they form the committee. So, and oftentimes, they may or may not request a Select Board appointment for those committees. I think that the Comp Plan, the issue there was that Dennis was already filling the spot that was assigned for the Select Board. So that was, I think that was one reason why you may have heard that.
Because I stepped down from that committee.
For that?
Well, I had to, when I joined Select Board.
I see.
But, and so that may be one reason, but I guess to Dave's question too, a lot of the Boards and Committees have these guiding policies that are typically included with the Board and Committee information that's available again on that website. And we have a whole binder of procedures, policies, guidelines for all the Boards and Committees. And that's a good read if you have time. Brendan would be ecstatic about it, he read the Comp Plan. But it's another one of those documents that really sets out the basis for how Boards and Committees are formed. And ultimately, it really is the Select Board that makes the appointments and assignments. And we do have an obligation to advertise these things. And I'll check on the Connectivity Committee and just confirm that that was advertised. And if not, we'll have to make sure we advertise it better.
And we'll make sure, and I just, just so folks know, they could still apply interested, they could still apply to be a part of the ad hoc committee?
Oh, absolutely, we still have several open positions on that committee, so.
So again, if someone is interested in being on that committee, they can absolutely apply and volunteer to be on that committee.
Yep.
Just Megan Chilwell.
And I think in thinking about this after a few minutes here, I think what we did was that Eric sent out an email to the people who had been on the Broadband Committee and asked if they wanted to continue on.
That's right.
And if they did, to submit an application.
And you were on that, yeah.
And I was on that. And not everybody who was on that committee asked to continue to be on another committee. So I think that's how that happened.
And I'm not saying that you're not qualified to be, or there is no reason for that.
I understand.
I'm just saying, you know, from the public's view, it doesn't look quite right, is what I'm saying.
Right, well, and I think that's what happened, is that it went out, is anyone interested in doing this? And so, once you get an email that says, are you interested, you reply, so.
Excellent.
It was not listed on May's Messenger.
Okay, well, I'll make sure it's in the next one.
Excellent. Anyone else from the public? Go ahead, Brandon, you got it, you know the routine.
Brendan Feig, you say that you want public input on what you're doing in your meetings and whatnot, correct?
As much as possible, yes, sir.
So do you feel that making sideways comments on your Facebook campaign page about people speaking is appropriate?
Well, give me an example, Brandon.
Go back to last week and reread your Facebook.
Sure, what am I looking at?
The day after the public meeting, when you were using terms like crazy?
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't make people want to get up and speak.
Well, that's my opinion, I hope that they don't.
I'm asking if you think that's appropriate as chairman of the Board.
Well, I did hear some crazy stuff, I would say, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And I don't have any problem saying that.
So people can speak and know that they'll be called names?
No, no, that's not, I just, that was my interpretation. I think that if you look back at that meeting, you can certainly hear some things in there that didn't make a lot of sense to me, and I have every right to be able to say, I felt like that was crazy. So yes, sir. If you want to, if that, if my little opinion deters you from speaking, forgive me.
No, it certainly doesn't.
No, I certainly hope not, there's no reason for it to. Thank you. Anyone else? Greg? This is it, buddy.
Hi, Greg Durgan, down on Route 41. Kind of think maybe I walked into a little business or something, I don't know what's going on previously. But I heard committees, and thank you Catherine for singling me out in the audience. I am on several committees. I've always believed in participation and if you want your voice heard, I probably would be glad to step aside from some committees if someone, if I'm holding someone back from joining trails or conservation or whatever. Hopefully that he or she would be quite a bit younger than me, so he could serve long term, that would be good. But I am here to talk about a couple of other things. I wanted to, I see Steve D'Ance is not here. Fortunately Jerry Bly is here, we didn't set this up. Eric is here. And Sean, I want to thank the people that set up those two public meetings, whether you, whatever you think went on during them. It took some time and effort, and I think the first one, we were here at almost nine o'clock on the Fairgrounds one. We had some good participation. Thank you for setting them up and having them go. The other thing about a committee is, there's been some articles in the community advertiser recently about issues facing our town. And I'm a big proponent of speaking your mind, getting it out there, whether it's the print media or standing here in public. But I do think people should put their names to it. There's a committee out there, CSI, Common Sense and Integrity, I believe it is, Citizens for Common Sense and Integrity. So some of the comments from those articles kind of ring what I've heard in meetings here. So again, I'm a believer in putting your name where, if it matters, put your name to it. So I emailed Dave Linton and I emailed all the members of the Select Board and asked them the same question. Are you a member or are you a participant in that CSI committee? And I received, first reply was from Dave, no, I'm not. Catherine and Dennis and Sean all replied, Carol, you didn't. And maybe the emails get lost up in email heaven, but I'm here to ask tonight because I'm curious if you're a member of that group.
I'm happy to speak to that. CSI is about 30 people who have a chat and we talk about a lot of topics. And it's a whole bunch of ideas posted and then something goes out and people wordsmith it. A lot of it is what I've said in meetings that publicly, and a lot of it, I know the first one on Open Space wouldn't surprise anybody, that was me to a large extent, because I've said that over and over and over again, over the last how many months. I'm not writing them, I'm inputting and a whole bunch of other people are inputting. And that's why nobody's name's on it, because it's not one person, it's a group that we're discussing. It actually started April 1st, April Fool's Day, we had a big breakfast at a diner who was getting lambasted for his opinion in the paper. And a bunch of us had breakfast and we talked for probably two hours about a whole bunch of topics in the town. And from there, you know, it's like, a lot of people didn't know things were going on. Open Space for one of them. I knocked on doors for months trying to get people to do the survey for Comprehensive Plan, like, did you do the survey? We need input from all types of people, all ages, whatever. And that day, people that were there had reached out to other people and it's like, did you know this was going on? And did you know this was going on? And it kind of started April 1st. And it's not one person, and it's not one writer, and it's a, it's a group.
I just guess from my perspective, I'd like to see a name attached to, because I don't, to be honest with you, I don't give a lot of credence to things that aren't signed.
Okay, understood.
And I believe, I'm not going to say that, but so even if it's 40 people, you know, Greg Durgan for the committee, yada, 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 okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all, have a good evening, everybody.
Yes, sir, it's public comment. You can go to the, yeah, there we go, excellent, sir.
Hi, Greg Blach, a little bit up the road. I guess my only question is, what's the plan to get the beach ready for the summer?
Well, I'm glad you asked that. We talked a little bit about that just a moment ago. Hiring beach attendants is one of our biggest things right now, getting folks to work down there. And then I also mentioned about the float, getting a float in, we're going to look at that, finding out if we can have the budget for it or something like that, because we're not going to use the same float, right? That's what I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there more that, Eric, can you?
I mean, basically, we've had our superintendent hired and he's starting in earnest this week. Basically, he works Tuesday through Saturday, and he'll be down there, and I think I put him in contact with you to do some volunteering, which I want to thank you for again. And so I think that, yeah, we'll work with staff and we'll work with any volunteers to get that place in shape.
The reason why I ask is Memorial Day weekend is upon us. I'm hoping we can figure this out by Friday.
Yeah, I think it's well on its way.
Good, yeah, I had a good chance to meet Noah, by the way, he just got his bachelor's degree in education from the University of Maine at RNO. And he's also water safety instructor qualified.
Mm-hmm.
And he's a great kid.
Yeah.
So thank you, I just hope we can get this so it's, you know, once again, we don't have yet another underperforming public space.
Yeah.
While we're in this whole exciting time, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here? All right, anyone else on Zoom? It's your last chance, going once, going twice. Moving on then. Our next agenda item is 23119. In fact, 21, 23120 and 23121 are all appointments to the Connectivity Committee. We begin in our packet with Rocco Graziano. And do we want to do these all together to the same committee or do we want to do them individually?
Individually.
Individually, sure. Excellent. So our first one is for Rocco Graziano to be appointed to the Connectivity Committee for a period that runs through tonight through June 30th of 2025. Don't know if Rocco is joining us there, okay, no worries. Any questions or concerns? It looks like he has plenty of qualifications. So I would take a motion to.
Make a motion to appoint Rocco Graziano to the Connectivity Committee effective tonight for a term until 6:30 of 2025.
Excellent, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Rocco Graziano to the Connectivity Committee. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? And thank you very much. Our next one is to appoint David, Daniel Wells to the Connectivity Committee. You can also see that Dan Wells was a member of the Broadband Committee earlier. Is there any discussion or questions?
I'd make a motion to appoint Dan Wells to the Connectivity Committee beginning tonight for a term ending on 6:30 of 2025.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Daniel Wells to the Connectivity Committee. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. And last but not least, our next appointment is for Catherine Woodson to be a part of the Connectivity Committee, also a part of the Broadband Committee before. Are there any questions or concerns? Excellent. I would entertain a motion to appoint Catherine Woodson to this committee.
Make a motion to approve Catherine to the committee from tonight through June 30th of 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Catherine Woodson to the Connectivity Committee. Any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much. Our next appointment is for the Reed Field Road Committee. This is for Henry Whitmore, who is seeking an appointment that will go through tonight through the end of June 30th, June 30th, 2025. Are there any more questions or concerns?
No, I'd just like to thank Henry, it appears he hasn't been on a committee for quite some time, so it's nice to have him back in the fold for the town.
I think he's on heels.
Oh, I think you're right.
He's, yeah, okay. So he's just adding another meeting to his life, and we appreciate that, Henry. I would entertain a motion to appoint Henry Whitmore to the Road Committee.
I'll make that motion effective tonight through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Henry Whitmore to the Road Committee. Is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Do we have the papers, sir?
Yes, we do. I'll start passing those around. Usually Steve's poking me for them, but you know, he's not here to do that, so.
And our last, well, our penultimate appointment is for Marilyn Palmer as warden for the June 13th Town Meeting. You can see the information in the packet. Is there any more discussion or questions about that?
No.
Very well. I would entertain a motion to appoint Marilyn Palmer as the moderator and warden of the election on June 13th.
I'll make a motion to appoint Marilyn Palmer as the moderator of the election on June 13th.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Marilyn Palmer as the warden and moderator of the election on June 13th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. And last but not least, we do this as a slate of election officials, which you can find in the packet on page 23. It's for the June 13th ballot and election clerks. We have that, we usually do these as a slate. Is there any questions or concerns about that? Very well. I would.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, I'm on.
Okay, thank you, Steve, I will include you in this next appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the slate of election ballot and election clerks is listed in the packet. Do you want me to read the names?
You better, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Greg Durgan, Karen Peterson, Kim Whitman, Lynn Katz, Hanish, Andrews Tolman, Lorraine Clark, Marilyn Palmer, Grace Keane, Catherine Woodson, Steve Woodson, Thelma Parks, and Emily Roderick.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint the slate of ballot election clerks as presented and listed by Catherine. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to point out that that slate does include an equal listing of both registered Democrat and Republican. I'm not going to say who's who. But there is a balance there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. In person, all in favor? All right, and Steve?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's in the affirmative, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. We move now to Old Business, we have 10 minutes set aside for items 23, 067, and 106. First, 067 is to hear an update on the Comprehensive Plan. We have five minutes set aside for this. Eric?
Yeah, so just quickly, I wanted to point out that we did have a public hearing and we heard some constructive criticism about the plan and also some positive feedback as well. But I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the discussion that was had. Community identity is one of the most challenging things that we can, you know, work on, and the Comprehensive Plan really is a reflection of competing interests and goals and priorities. And the intent of that document really is to try to find some common ground. Not everything there is going to be appealing to everybody. There are going to be some things that are confusing. Somebody pointed out something that was just flat out wrong. And there's a little bit of that in there. And so I just wanted to point out that it is a complicated document, but it's also a non-binding document. It's really just a listing of ideas that the community then can and should have continuing discussions on and then work through the Select Board and the Boards and Committees and the public at large through the warrant and elections and voting to decide what direction we want to head in. Nothing in that plan is binding. There are no financial measures that are binding, there are no, you know, directions that are binding, it's just a place to start a discussion. And I can understand that there's people that disagree with that, but I did want to point out that we had and have had over the last two to three years, a lot of good feedback and a lot of good discussion with broad-based input from several committees and hundreds of residents. So I, again, nothing's perfect, I appreciate the process and the information that was presented. And I did want to point out that we do have, under the Comprehensive Plan Committee, a full listing of all the documents that were made available and have been part of this discussion. We also have Board and Committee minutes and agendas and all of that going back a year or two at least. And I had some, people had some questions about when items were made available, so I did go back and look and posted the dates when different items were made available. I did go back and look and posted the dates when different items were made available. So there's always, with the Comp Plan, always opportunity for continuing improvement and discussion, because we'll be doing this again in 10 years. But in the meantime, we're going to be doing it every year as we talk about what direction we want our community to head. So just wanted to give an update on that and say that we do have one more opportunity for all of the items that are going to be on the ballot, including the Comprehensive Plan. We have that public hearing on May 31st that really is just a summary of all the work that's been done over the last couple of years. So that's my brief update on the Comp Plan. I was interested, Dennis, you wanted to add anything as the rep?
Uh, yes, I just think that we had a great meeting and we had some good discussions. There's some things in the plan. I encourage you to go check it out. It's not really 298 pages. It's the meat of it is there, but there's a lot of recommendations, a lot of glossary terms and things like that. But don't be, check it out. Just go to the site, do it two or three times, cut it up in chunks however you can to be familiar with it, because it's valid, it's worth it, there was a lot of work went into it. And I think it's a really nice update to what we had in 2009. I'm anticipating a great vote of people, you know, looking at it and knowing what it says. And I just am so impressed with all of the work that has gone into it over the last two years. So thank you very much to everyone who's been a part of it. Excellent. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just gonna say that I'm still working through it, I'm still not super far, and hope to get through it before the vote. I kind of cut and pasted like a document of things that are jumping out at me. And some, I appreciate the hard work, I really, really do, of everybody. I'm sure it's been often tedious.
A lot of meetings, Carol, a lot of meetings.
There's just some verbiage that sneaks in here and there, like promoting eco-friendly business and encouraged development in the village, and just stuff that seems to be very PC, which I think everything should be generic, and I guess most, most everybody, I don't care who you are or where you live, you just don't want to be told you have to do thus and such, you just want people to leave you alone, and you want to live, and you want to keep your land and move on. And so I'm still making my way through it. And I know it's 298 pages, and we'll get there. It's just, they're just, in some spots, I've just caught some words that I'm like, ugh, we can probably do without that slant.
You're not alone, Carol. I think anybody that reads all 298 pages is going to find something they disagree with.
Yeah. But again, all the Comprehensive Plan update documents, all of the information is on the website, reedfieldmaine.org. Reedfieldmaine.org. All right. Moving on to our 23106, hear an update from the ad hoc Fairgrounds Working Group. We have five minutes set aside, and one of the process leaders, Jerry Bly, is at the podium. I'll let you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the committee.
All right. I am Jerry Bly. I am, as you say, one of the co-process leaders for the Fairgrounds Working Group, along with Steve, who fortunately is joining in and can add to whatever I present. I'm going to provide you with a very brief update. The working group prepared a proposed concept plan with the assistance of landscape architect Regina Leonard, that received consensus report from the group. We presented that at a public meeting last week. There was a fantastic turnout, which was really truly wonderful, both online as well as in person. We heard from a lot of folks who would like to see a basketball court, that was clear. The working group is not planning to meet again prior to the town meeting vote. If the Fairgrounds warrant article passes, we will reconvene after the vote to continue our planning work. And as part of that, we will undertake an effort focused on citing a basketball court in the village area in the same way that we did with our efforts to cite the softball field. The hope is that, is still that we can have a more fully developed plan along with cost estimates, ready to go to voters in November. Honestly, that's going to be a challenge, but we will do our best. Steve, do you have anything you want to add?
Hang on, he's unmuting.
Myself? I don't think so, Jerry. I think that's just fine. Yep.
So when you say locate the basketball court in the village area, that includes the fairgrounds?
Includes the fairgrounds, absolutely.
People say village, we think.
No, no.
And someone pointed out, since softball has a very finite season, and if it's not at, if the basketball court's not at the fairgrounds, that may attract a bunch of different people and make it more of a recreation center, regardless of the gardens, it's a different group of people. And then someone reminded me that there is consideration for soccer fields, which would be a different season than the softball field. So some of the banter about has been, okay, if the basketball court isn't there, and we don't know that yet, there is the inexpensive option to use the portable mound to convert the baseball field. And if it's not going to be heavily used, do we really need to go to the great expense to redo and do sidewalks at Church Road? So this is all like, really all coming full circle, and one plan might affect another plan. And so there's a lot of discussions and a lot of planning that, input, I guess, that has to be considered before November. But it seems like those two projects somewhat maybe tied in together, we're making it a big, you know, place where people gather throughout the year, more or less.
Same. I'd just like to note that softball is played more by adults than baseball, and I think there are a lot of pickup games, so I don't think softball field would be used just in softball season for girls' sports. I think you'd see a lot of use, like you said, for lots of various things happening down there. And you might see softball leagues start if we have a softball field. So, you know, I think having the opportunity for lots of different uses is really smart.
This is Sean. I just want to mention that anybody that thinks that our seasons, that the Reedfield rec seasons run on what you see happening at Church Road, it's not, that's not true. That is the seasons that run at Church Road that we can currently maintain. The girls' softball season and the opportunities for girls to play softball is much larger. However, we do not have a place to host that. So whether it's at, goes to Manchester or not, there are girls in our community that play in Augusta and Windsor leagues, so that they can play more than just seven weeks, eight weeks that rec runs their program. So I don't want people to think that we're spending money for girls to play softball for six weeks of the year. We're trying to work on equality for the girls, but also just, there's more to the space than just those six weeks. There's more opportunity that it would bring, an opportunity for adults to play, there could be up, which you can't do in different settings. I don't, I don't, I don't know if you guys realize, I'm not athletic looking, so, you know, I don't participate in these. But I know that there are a lot of people that do.
We don't see that, Sean.
Thank you, Catherine, I appreciate that. But, you know, I just think that, for me, that we need to think about the multi-use too, so that the fact that the outfield's will be on the same grade, I don't know if you've ever tried to watch the kids play football practices on the leach field at the high school? It's really awesome, it gets pretty wet, and it never seems to dry out. Greg's laughing over here, but it's, that's how bad it is. There would be an opportunity for kids to maybe do practice in those outfield's too. It really is going to open up a lot of opportunities outside of what people consider six weeks of softball.
I would just say that, you know, part of the ultimate compelling agreement among the working group for the softball field being there is that multi-use, not only for other sports, but for community events as well.
And the understanding from what I have been reading and listening to is that the working group is not going to meet again prior to the vote.
Right.
And that after the vote, there will be a reformed committee of some sort that will be working towards putting together a proposal that would possibly come in November?
Yeah, I would, I would say that is our understanding. You know, originally, we started out in January with the goal of being able to submit a grant proposal in June for whatever plan was put forward. Two-thirds of the way through, we realized that that timeframe wasn't going to work, so we just, you know, moved to get a plan before people to discuss before the town meeting vote. So we don't have it all figured out. Obviously, we seek guidance from you, but that is our, you know, what we have been telling folks, that the proposed plan is not a final plan. What the vote is not to vote on a specific plan, but to see if there is community support or the overall concept of doing recreational development at the fairgrounds, blah, blah, blah. And if there is, then we are prepared. I really can't speak for all the committee members, because we haven't had a chance, but I believe committee members are prepared to continue working, taking the input we received at the public meeting and otherwise, to try to, you know, come up with something more complete in time for November.
And we'll have a formal committee working on this. It won't just be a working group anymore, correct?
That's up to the Select Board.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Jerry, and thank you, Steve, for the update. We move now to new business. Oh, heavens, yes. You know the, yes, you know the routine. Sorry, Virginia.
You didn't see the hand.
No, 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 I was, I was moving right on.
So only because we're right on this topic?
Sure.
So I heard there might be a vote in November. Last July, when you guys had a Select Board meeting after the vote got voted down for the funding, and Carol had suggested about, you know, doing phases and piecing it and then having a vote in November, you all said there's no town business on the November election. So now we can vote for something in regards to the fairgrounds in November?
We've, we've always been able to have a special town meeting in November that would coincide with the state election. We just didn't do that last year.
Oh, because the way I interpreted what you guys said at the meeting was that no town business gets on the November type of election?
No, it was just for 2022, there was no town business on the November one.
Okay.
That was all. Yes, indeed. Good. Good question. Anything else? All right. We have new business to take a look at. 23125 is to hear, oh, the H Friendly Committee will not be updating us tonight about Reedfield U. They couldn't make it. So we move to item 23126, which is consider offering the 2023 Juneteenth holiday to municipal employees.
Steve's right there. He doesn't. Never mind.
Is there any discussion on this? We put this into the contract. It's a recognized holiday anyway. I think this is just a, like an official Select Board vote to give Juneteenth, which is a holiday anyway. Is there any discussion or question about that? Eric, do you have anything else to add?
No, just, you nailed it, that the current contract that starts June 30th does include this as an official holiday. It is, as you noted, federal and state already. So one of the things that we had discussed during that negotiation was the idea that what does two weeks really do, and that it might be appropriate to offer that this year as opposed to waiting until next.
Which is why we're voting on it now. Next year, we won't have to do that, because it'll always ready be a part of the contract. Excellent. Does that make sense, everyone?
I'll make a motion to recognize June 19th as the Juneteenth holiday for all town business in Reedfield for 2023.
I'll second that. But I just, Eric, don't we, under the current contract, have to follow the state holidays anyway?
We don't. We don't.
State closures?
Just state closures, but that's also been amended. We fixed that.
Yeah.
Piece, that the winter storm closures are no longer tied to the state of Maine, which is wonderful.
Yeah.
Because they're not always right.
And right for Reedfield, they're not always-
No, it was right for Reedfield, yeah. But no, it's not, it's not a requirement under the current contract.
But it is a state holiday, because it is a V8 holiday.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Juneteenth for Reedfield municipal employees. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? And Steve is in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Item 23127 is to discuss the upcoming Heritage Day celebration in August. I kind of jumped that with my Select Board communication, but I can certainly tell everyone. We're looking at a number of different activities. I can give you a rough idea. The library's going to have their book sale again this year. There will be a history walk from Dale Potter Clark again this year. The rec department is going to be doing the kickball tournament. That will be happening this year. Activities at the beach begin from, go from 12 to 4, where we will have the Makers Market and Community Fair. The past, we've had blacksmiths, artists, things of that nature, knitters, bear creators, all sorts of neat things down there. And then also this year, we're doing the Community Fair, which includes organizations, church organizations, local organizations, as well as businesses. So Heritage Days is August 11th and 12th, Friday and Saturday. Friday, as it always does, kicks off with the wine and cheese celebration at the Historical Society. And then Saturday night, we're actually going to have a volunteer, town volunteer recognition and Spirit of America Awards potluck, which happens Saturday night in this room to recognize our volunteers and our Spirit of America winners. That will happen, and then hopefully, once we're all well-fed and ready to go to sleep, we can walk down to the beach and see the fireworks, which are all set for that. So that's the Heritage Day celebration. Our next meeting, if you are interested in coming, will be June 21st, excuse me, that is wrong, June 25th. It's the Sunday after Father's Day. So thank you to everyone who has been there and come. H Friendly is part of it, the Historical Society, everybody.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting for five minutes.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting for five minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. And we move now to item 23128, which is to consider an annual order on the application of tax payments. Eric, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. So state statute requires the town to effectively assign the order in which taxes are paid, so that they are applied to the oldest first. That's very much to the benefit of the folks that are paying the taxes in the event they are approaching foreclosure. But it's something that we do annually, and this order that is before you also includes as backup that state statute that I referenced. And this allows folks to pay their taxes and have the funds applied to the oldest balance first.
And that's, this is just something we've always done? Yes, we just need to approve it officially?
Yes, correct.
Exactly right. So I'd entertain a motion to accept that payment schedule? Is that what we're doing here? Is that how you say it?
It's not a schedule.
It's not a schedule, it's just an order. So the basis is the municipal offices of the town of Reedfield, upon request of the tax collector treasurer of said town, hereby authorize and direct the tax collector treasurer, pursuant to Title 36 MRSA, Section 906, to apply any tax payments received from an individual as payment for any property tax against outstanding or delinquent taxes due on said property in chronological order, beginning with the oldest unpaid bill, provided, however, that no such payments may be applied to any tax for which an abatement, application, or appeal is pending unless approved in writing by the taxpayer.
Excellent. So what we'll do is entertain a motion to accept that payment order.
Dennis, I just memorized all that. I could read it back to you in the form of a motion if you'd like, or I could just say so moved.
Second.
Good.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to accept the payment schedule, or excuse me, payment order as defined by Eric there. Any other further discussion on that?
So is this form of it different in any way over what was approved like last year?
Not for the last history that I'm aware of. It's always the same language. Yeah, yeah, it just needs to be done annually to be valid.
Pro forma, I believe they call it.
That's the word.
Something we've got to go through. All right. Very well. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Very well.
We have the paper.
And Steve, thank you in the affirmative. Thank you.
Yep.
I believe that brings an end to our agenda. Is there anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor. And Steve is in the affirmative. Thank you, sir. And Steve is in the affirmative. Thank you, sir. Very well. Have a good night.
We have just one more paper coming at you to sign.
Yeah, don't leave yet.